Hello everyone, and you know, today we'll be playing Deadly Pre- Yeah, feel some, I figure out, best way to get time, we need either sleep or cigarette. Now some theories here, maybe- Ceiling, I mean like a track, 3D printed a track that would paint my green screen, so we're trying to Break that green screen. Only go here yet, it's too early. Go over. Yeah, we'll just wreck that, that's good. Good. Need a final place to either smoke or- Forget to take a little journey here. It doesn't take too long. I always wish it was like a way to do it instantly, but apparently that's not the case. Think this is the hotel. We'll get out here and grab this, make some time up. It's interesting. Drives me in. Background music. Seventies or some- I have no idea when this game- Actor. Oh, it's coffee, okay. It's good, not bad, not bad. Hell, but you can go- Uh, shame. Let's sleep real quick, can't see what happened. Little slight sleep with three hours and then it's time. Once we get in the car, we should be able to check the time. That was a long drive, just- Anytime. We should have done that nigga, go past fires. Keep them waiting for an hour late. Gotta get out of here though, it's a problem. Alright, here we go. But we learn how to speed up time. Game. Here maybe his light sleep was, I don't know. Don't take nap soon. The lights is power nap option. Good, like thirty, something? Yes, I swipe. That is. Don't got much time. Mess around. Boss or something else? Only one, won't listen, thousand hour. I swipe this guy right here. Ah. I get on my way. Also, I've never ran out of fuel the game so far. Alright, here we go. There is a second preminish game. That. Ah, what, two? Uh, there one now. Here we go. Um, yeah, I'm not so sure. Deadly Pre- Two. This one's good, so. But I'm, it's only usually when I'm just considering it, because I'm curious. Curious of, uh, the graphics and storyline, kinda interesting. If you haven't watched this one so far, me playing this game, basically this detective here in this town, small town, trying to, he's with FBI and he's trying to trying to go ahead and solve this crime, these series of murders. Usually it takes you to, right to the Bush's. Everyone's look- Got it. Means this one's not so bad, background music, but it's weird, because it's almost like her down the music, though. Like a vault setting, build up. The music is way too loud for the, uh, for the actual It's way too loud for the actual game, it's Music was, alright. Get this right here. It's driving me insane. Hell. Play this as a new character I haven't seen yet. Yep. He looks guilty as hell. Excuse me. This guy right here is weird as hell. Get this mask and like a respirator thing going on. So Zack is like his, I would say alter that would too really is go in the detail, that backstory. Yeah. Yeah, we need to try to adjust the sound. Hold up, it's driving me nuts, let's Figures we can't change, okay, let's I want the coffee. Can I talk to you? Let's just take this off here. Yes, he suspect. See what the suspects are going on there.
Yep. Murder just doesn't fit with a small town like ours. I guess you're right. How did you know Anna? What do you know about Sally? I don't see her here today. Ah, well, see, she lost her husband and this time it's her daughter. She's at home right now, trying to make peace with it all. You seem to know a lot. How long have you been in love with her? Hey, hey, don't go there. That scar of yours tells me you got your hands full too, right? Let's not dive into personal matters. It'll be better for you and me. You're right, Richard. Collecting gossip won't help with the matter at hand.
Talk to this dude. And a Q.
So Anna was killed, but why does that bring the FBI here?
I have an interest in murder cases involving young women.
Well, you know, man, this might just be another case to you, but it means the death of a friend to me. And I want you taking this lightly like it's just another case.
I never take anything of this nature lightly, I assure you. I'm here to apprehend the perpetrator who did this.
Yeah, because local enforcement can't shine their own boots, right?
Good point. You can't always count on the police now, can you? But that doesn't mean you're going to capture the perpetrator yourself.
How do you know my name?
Your hat.
I memorize the name of every citizen before arriving in town. I also know about you and your significant other.
You mean Becky?
Don't underestimate the FBI. We know and see everything.
I'm sorry if I was a little harsh. I wanna help, I do. Okay?
Okay Zack, I'll tell you how I knew his name. He's got a small Q on his hat. That was the only name beginning with Q that I could think of. He was even kind enough to tell us his girlfriend's name. I can read him like a book, Zack.
First, the end. Actually, just shoot him.
Good evening, Mr.?
Brian, the gravekeeper. Brian.
Mr. Brian? I like the retro look. Auditioning for Little Grave on the Prairie?
Anna, oh, she was so beautiful. Too soon. Too, too soon to go to the grave. So sad, so sad.
I totally agree. That's why I'm here, looking for the one who did it. Were you close to her?
Hmm. Anna, her smile, so warm.
That's creepy as-
Anna, blonde hair, so bright.
There's a graveyard somewhere in town, Zack. I'm not excited about the idea, but maybe we should at least check it out.
Yes. Alright. How do we get out of here? Progress going. I gotta let her know. Who figured it out? Ow.
Anna was an airhead.
What do you mean? Are you saying she was killed because she was an airhead? Or are you saying that she was an airhead for being killed?
I'm sure she's still an airhead, even in heaven. She changed her hair every day. If she lost a pound, she'd be ecstatic. Gain one and she'd almost be in tears. She broke many, many plates every day at the diner and she'd always have a smile on her face. Always having fun. Everyone looked at her and knew she was a cute, adorable, loving airhead. But they would be smiling right along with her. I wouldn't be surprised if the angels smiled with her too.
What the hell? Really not. Odd for a suspect, don't you think, but? Hot lady, okay. Hey, hey. Think we should already gone, but- We have to go to that graveyard. I agree, the hell out. Alright. Oh my- We gotta ask someone a question? Uh, focused in the wrong areas, I guess.
And you are?
Oh, I'm Gina. I'm married to Jack. He runs the gas station. Call me the rose.
You look pretty revealing.
Oh, this old thing. You should see some of my other clothes.
You? Ooh, now you are cool. That scar really is a turn-on. You should come to my station. I'll give you a little extra service.
What? I think they're on opposite. Been all over the damn town. X. They do that the whole time they're talking?
I'll drop by your store soon and let's talk then.
And who are you?
Yes, I'm Lily.
I'm FBI Special Agent-
Agent York, right?
You are good.
The handsome special agent from the big city. The facial scar trademark. The way you introduce yourself, everyone's talking about you.
Well, I can't say much about the scar. But the way I introduce myself, Zack and I consider it a kind of ritual of sorts. Everyone has their own rituals. It's like always leaving the house left foot first. It's one of those things.
The mirror, everybody's flirting with him. Even that dude.
You think there's something else?
But she took in the boys and told me to wait outside. Something about a special secret between just the three of them. I just couldn't understand it.
Thank you, Lily. Perhaps we should give Becky a visit tomorrow, Zack.
Uh, graveyard. Graveyard in- Graveyard in... Speed this up a little.
I'm FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan. Please, call me York.
Wesley, owner of the gun store called Panda Bear. People around here call me the Gunsmith.
Got a nice ring to it.
Was there something you wanna ask me?
How do you make a living running a gun store in a place like this? I'd be worried, because there can't be that many customers.
Worry gives a small thing a big shadow. I do gunsmith work in my shop, too. If you got the skills, the customers find you. All you need is a network.
I hope so.
Alright, okay. I don't know what to... We're just gonna... See what happens. Open again? Okay, okay. Okay, I'm not paying that much money. Yep. We're done.
You've got quite a selection here. No wonder people come from all around.
Even today, a customer paid me to go to Seattle for some help. I just got back.
I see. Well, I'll be sure to visit your store sometime. I'd like for you to take a look at my gun.
Understood. Look forward to it. The shop will be open again tomorrow. It's usually open from twenty hundred to oh six hundred. See you then.
That's... Go from eight to six in the morning, and that's kinda... Heard of that, oh my... People?
I'm US Special Agent Francis York Morgan. I presume you are the owner of the diner that Anna worked at?
That's right.
Oh yeah, so do this, just have to have a name.
I'd like to ask you a few questions about Anna Graham. Did you notice anything strange about her prior to the incident? Nick? Are you hiding something?
No, nothing.
You sure?
I'm sorry, but I don't like repeating myself.
Kind of an asshole.
I'm US Special Agent Francis York Morgan. And you are?
Olivia, Nick's wife?
Ooh, good luck with that. Probably mis- probably miserable.
What kind of girl was she?
Well, she was a very hard worker. A nice girl.
Did you ever see her acting strange?
Well, not really. But, there was one thing. Well, you see, the diner closes when it rains. Many shops do that around here, as you might have heard. Anyway, Anna always seemed unfocused the day after it rained. And came in late, too. It was almost as if she used up all her energy the day before. Come to think of it, that was really strange. Did that legendary monster really kill her?
It wasn't a monster. Just a criminal. Criminal I'm going to catch and bring to justice.
I think we're... We just gassed. Oh. House the... Suspect. Not that. Guess so. We're done. He did. Let's skip. Let's go be done with it. His fault.
So, you're the FBI agent, are ya?
I'm FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan.
I'm the general. I fought for my country in the Vietnam War.
A real-life war hero. So why are you living here?
Soldier, this is my hometown. After a man returns from war, there's no place to go other than his hometown. Your little speech, you mentioned the Raincoat Killer.
Was that a problem?
You imbecile. The Raincoat Killer's no myth, not mere folklore, nor a fairy tale. It's based on actual events that happened in this town.
It is. I'm interested. Can you tell me more about this?
You kids today don't even know how to ask for something right. Soldier, if you wanna hear more, you come to my office.
Now we gotta go to his office.
He literally exudes raw power, Zack. Despite the credibility issues, we should give him a visit. One thing, though. Calls himself a general, but isn't that a sergeant's uniform?
That's very true. If we can get... Probably save. Nope. Quite a bit of time. We'll save it, and then... Uh, just fill it up asleep. Like, we're, are like, maybe thirty? Didn't ask. Let me at least... Why? Alright. Who's this suspect in here? Best error. Where's your pro-
Agent York? Your words really made me think about Anna's death again. How could one do such a terrible thing? I'm still in shock.
Thomas, I forgot to ask. You don't have a tattoo on your back, do you?
Uh, tattoo? I do, actually. But why?
Could you show it to me, please?
What? Now? Here?
Yes, please.
Little clue from the previous, um... Like, chapters, if you will. Looks really suspicious.
Okay, if it's gonna help you any.
Bust his pants off.
Well, I'm wondering who G is now, but aside from that... Did it tell you anything? It told me that you didn't kill Anna.
Of course not. What are you saying?
You wanna see that tattoo, Zack? A big heart with an arrow through it, and "Love G" in the center. I don't know when he got that done, but... We've all been through the eighties.
Alright. I'm sure that could-
Agent Morgan, here's your chance to get to know some of the townsfolk. Don't let it go to waste.
Helped out. Yeah, we're done talking to you. Seems like we're never gonna get... We might have to break this up until...
Agent York, you make any progress?
Of course, plenty. Now tell me, Usher, when is Anna's funeral?
Hmm, that's still undecided. Sally isn't really in any condition to do it right now.
Her mother? I don't see her here.
Anna was her sole reason for living after her husband was deceased. Well, she's probably huddled up at home.
And I should probably take some time to pay her a visit.
Well, yes, you should. And I'd appreciate it if you could, too. Uh, but don't go too hard on her, okay?
Honestly, we... I doubt. We're never gonna leave this place, ever. Very much I doubt she is.
Mr. Morgan, you're quite an impressive public speaker.
Really? Thank you, Polly.
You reminded me a little of a play I saw when I was younger.
What kind of play?
I'm talking about back when this place was still called the Mercury Theater. When I was young, I used to come here often with my husband. God rest his soul. We'd come on the weekend to see the latest play. He'd always pretend to be uninterested. But I could tell he was excited inside. He was just one of those kinda goddesses, really, thinking about it now.
Really, Polly? So what's your favorite play?
Oh, well, I like so many. There was one in particular, but I can't recall the name anymore. Oh, it was a very famous one, too.
Something by Shakespeare?
Oh, um... No, nothing. One more bell that doesn't ring anymore. I've always been forgetful about the plays we used to see anyway. Oh, and my husband would get angry at me for forgetting what we saw. He'd go on for hours retelling what the play was about. His eyes were so sparkling, like a happy young boy.
I see. So, what's your favorite play?
Oh, I almost forgot, Mr. Morgan. We're going to have another guest soon. I have to get back and get things ready. Sorry for having to hurry away. I'll see you back at the hotel.
Please do.
Zack, I think she could embarrass the toughest of the FBI's interrogators. She successfully avoided answering my question, Zack. Amazing.
Still with that damn pot.
Jim, thanks for your help in the forest.
Let's speed this up a little bit. I'm sorry.
They're fine.
They really seem to love their grandpa.
Well, I guess they do, son. I wanna keep them away from the filth of the material world as much as I can. Their mother agrees, which is why she lets me take care of them so often. And that's why I want you to solve this case quickly and go home. Those rumors about that scar of yours do more damage than good around here.
I guess I reek of the material world, don't I? I have to, in order to-
Mercy of the scars, interesting.
But I understand what you mean. I'd think the same if I was born in a place like this, Zack.
Yeah, I think we talked to... Talked to everybody. Guys, we talked to them. Talked to the graveyard person. Do a loop. Alright, we're gonna have to, uh, possibly get... Torted out. The only person I haven't talked... Nurse. And then, so if this doesn't work, we're gonna have to do-
Hello again, Fiona. Good to see you here.
Well, Dr. Johnson told me to be here. He said it would be important.
Well, that was good advice. He may be young, but he seems like a wise man.
Oh, and he's a very hard-working person, too. Everyone thinks he's some kind of weirdo. But I don't think so at all. People don't understand why he's in the autopsy room all day. But I do. He's doing research to make the world a better place in the future. You know, he already made a fortune in LA with his career.
I did not know that.
You didn't? Oh, the doctor is a very rich man. He has a really big house over by the lake.
Amazing, Zack. He must be loaded. Rich and young. A perfect combination.
But you don't get that feeling from him at all, do you? He doesn't show it. That's one of the things I like best about him.
Well, I could have been fooled if it weren't for you. Thanks for the valuable information, Fiona.
Agent Morgan? I'd like to let everyone go home now. Let's go outside.
Okay. I was ready to go a long time ago, by the way. We might have to speed this up a little bit, guys. Took way too long. Dude's still rockin' and rollin'. Alright, we finally cleared this out, though, guys. Thank you much, and... I don't know. Wasn't expecting that at all. I don't even know how far we're into this game, though, but hopefully, uh... The next... Gets better. I hope. Thanks again, we struggled on that one, but, uh... We made it through. Did it. For now. We're gonna see what this open scene is. Man, I think it's a cutscene. Usually typically it is, so we'll see what happens. And then we'll... Add note tool. But I ended there. Did games? That's pretty interesting.
I was going to head back to the hotel and look over my notes. I need to contact HQ and give a progress report, too.
Okay, then let's call it a day here.
Sounds good.
Contact my office when you finish your report. We'll pick you up tomorrow morning. Diane, the owner of the art gallery, should be back soon.
Alright, let's do that.
Hold on, Agent York. We're going out to eat at Nick's diner. Would you like to come with us?
The diner? That might be nice.
Thomas is a great cook, but Nick is the real deal. No visit to Greenville is complete without eating at the A&amp;G.
A very appealing proposition. Zack, what do you think? You can always go back to the hotel after eating dinner. Or go directly back to the hotel. You decide, Zack.
Let's go eat. Eat with them, I guess. I think she's got a soft spot. York. Alright, so that's the end of the... Let it load.
I've been sheriff here for... A long time now. And this is the worst murder I've ever seen.
Our town is a little odd in some ways, but it's usually a peaceful place.
We had our fair share of cases, but just the regular stuff. A high school kid shoplifting from the milk barn, maybe? Or some hot-headed kids fighting, fueled on liquor? Nothing more than that.
Agent York, what kind of cases have you dealt with in the past?
Not much different from those you've just mentioned. The case I was on until last month. Well, the guy killed seven girls in a three-month period. He sawed their heads off from the neck and took them back to his house. He cleaned the skulls up and used them as utensils in his daily life to eat from or. As a urine cup. He hated women. That was his way of dealing with it. He'd fill skulls with ice, cola, and rum, and he'd down it in one gulp. For him, that was a holy ritual. The question of his mental state was the pivotal point in the court case.
Oh, man.
For me, he was insane. A hundred percent. Drinking from the skulls, well, that is one thing. But those he had used to relieve himself, he would then just use them to drink from, too. Yeah, that was too much for me. It's just not sanitary.
Not sanitary? Uh, that's probably not the problem for most of us.
What else? Ah, yes. An ingenious law school student braked over eight hundred victims. It was a nasty one.
Thank you, Agent York. Now, let's talk about something else.
You don't wanna hear anymore? That's a shame, isn't it, Zack? I was just about to get to the good part, too.
Sounds like you live in a totally different world. You're like an elite agent who just jumped out from a movie or something. In your eyes, you must look like we're just playing cops and robbers. Ugh, I give up. I can't compete with you.
Don't say that, Emily. The cases you have solved are all full-fledged crimes. A crime is a crime. Size doesn't matter. There is no big and small. Crimes always have a criminal and a victim. No victim will ever welcome a crime, no matter what its size. So fundamentally, there is no difference in size.
That's weird.
Well said, Agent Morgan. We work day and night to preserve peace and order in this town. You understand that, right?
Of course, but still, I don't view shoplifting and Anna's murder as the same level of crime.
Me, neither. I never even dreamt that such a thing could ever even happen in this town. I keep on expecting to see Anna here in this diner, waiting on tables.
It's falling apart.
Excuse us, Agent Morgan. We should have made dinner a more uplifting experience. Let's call it a night.
Okay. Good night, then.
Good job, Agent York. Okay, hopefully we're done with the cutscenes. Wrap this up. Oh, we did. Thank God. Okay. Cool. Thank you guys so much for watching. That was a long one. Dragged. Kind of, kind of, but dragged a lot. Well, hopefully this next one would be a. Thank you again for watching and happy gaming.